Today, we're going to call this meeting to order. We want to acknowledge our High Desert and Joshua Chief Video Conference Sites as well. This morning, we're, it's our pleasure to introduce by Fifth District, our Pledge and Invocation. Joe, who's remotely visiting us, by the way. Oh, yeah, he's up there, too. We do have this TV screen down there sometimes. If you see us looking down here, that's what we're looking at, the same thing you're looking at there half the time.
Thank you, Chairman, for the opportunity to introduce our invocation. Today's invocation will be given by Bishop Emory James, who was called to ministry in 1975. He ordered pastor at Ephesians New Testament Church, which he has successfully served as a pastor for 35 years. Pastor James is a recording artist and released two projects. And Pastor James has been married to Venice, his wife, for 44 years, and he is also a resident of the city of Fontana. So I'd like to turn it over to Pastor Emory James to lead us in the invocation.
Good morning, Board. Shall we pray? Our God and Father, who is the Maker and Creator of all things, we thank thee for the privilege to gather this morning to conduct the business of the San Bernardino County. As individuals, we are not pretentious to think that we are here because of our own self-worth. We are here because of your divine guidance and favor whom you have found in us. Recognize that it was you that allowed us to awaken this day, and it was you who extended the privilege to govern your people, and for this privilege, we are grateful. We are faced with many dilemmas, and we are challenged on every side with concerns, with the concerns of the people. We have no answers to give unless we are led by your ultimate wisdom. Only you can discern the hearts of the people and give remedy through our appointed leadership. Today, we ask for your guidance, wisdom, and heavenly counsel. Attune our ears that we may hear you in all of our decisions. We ask for your protection and grace, that it be extended over each supervisor and their support staff, and that we may be found as an example of your love in every area of our county. Now bless this meeting. This we ask in the name of your Son. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor James. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good seeing you. Thank you. We're going to go through memorial adjournments. Supervisor Baca, come on up with you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I have two adjourned memories. One is Michael Dominguez, who's actually a resident of Barstow but of San Bernardino County. He recently passed. You know, just a longtime athlete and lifelong resident of Barstow, California. Just want to adjourn in his memory. Another one is a longtime activist, Lois Carson, who died of San Bernardino, 90 years of age. Lois was a longtime activist. She was involved with St. Anthony's Church, Catholic charities, the San Bernardino Valley College Foundation, and was a former community college member for the San Bernardino Community College School District. She will be missed, a longtime activist and Catholic in our community, so she will long time be missed. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chair Row.
I have two adjourned memories. I have Jane Smith, who was a longtime community figure in the community of Twenty-Nine Palms as well as the entire Morongo Basin. She served on the Copper Mountain College Foundation. She was the owner of the Twenty-Nine Palms Inn for many years, and she will be greatly missed in her contributions that she made to our community. And then Congressman Jerry Lewis, and I would like to ask Colonel Cook to say a few words about our congressman because you knew him the best out of all of us.
Thank you very much. A lot of people in this room don't know my history, but I had the dubious honor of following Jerry Lewis in Congress. I took his seat. And it's kind of strange when you go into somebody's representative's seat that he held for, I don't know how many years, it seems like forever, and representative of just about, I don't know, one time or another, most of the board here at one. But he probably did more for San Bernardino in terms of projects and legislation, and he's got more buildings named after him. He was so effective. You know, when I left Congress, I didn't even have a sewer plant named after me, which might be a good thing. And some people think it would have been apropos, but Jerry Lewis was, I don't know, just a very, very special person. And he represents the, not a Republican or a Democrat, but maybe somebody that got elected and got along with people. You know, in politics, you're not going to always agree. In fact, most of the time, you might have a different opinion, but you've got to learn how to work together. You're not going to get anything done. And he exemplified that belief. He always had a great disposition. Those of you that know him that went back there, he had his office and he had his dog, and of course, it was burrowing, burrowing, burrowing. I won't tell you what school he rooted for, but just always very gregarious and, as I said, a tough, tough act to follow. And, you know, he's had some health issues and everything else. It was my honor to follow him as a representative. You can never match him. There are certain people like that, but I certainly learned a lot. I wasn't afraid to call him up and say, Jerry, what's the deal on this? And he would always be willing to give you advice and everything else. And it's a great loss for all of us. Still my mentor, and he well-represented our county and will be certainly missed, and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. Do you have any more by this? Okay. Supervisor Rutherford.
My condolences also to the late congressman's family. He was a tremendous leader. I enjoyed his mentorship and will miss him. I have not listed on the earlier agenda because it was a last-minute addition, a former sheriff's deputy for our county, Ray Branum, passed away. Ray and I had the opportunity to worship together at the same church for many years. My condolences to his wife and children.
Thank you. And we're going to move on to reports from county council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No items to report this morning.
Thank you, Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No items to report.
Thank you so much. We have two special presentations today. I'm going to ask the board to come join me up front. Combined, we have two employees retiring, combined effort of 64 years of service to the residents of San Bernardino County. I'm going to ask Lori Koppler to come on up. Lori was Program Development Division Deputy Director of the Human Services Department, is retiring after 34 years of dedicated service to the county of San Bernardino. Come on up. In fact, I'm going to let you hold this while I read your accolades there. There we go. Thank you. She has been an asset to human services promoting quality and excellence in service in the community throughout the region. Her extraordinary accomplishments include an establishment of one of the first large-scale independent living programs in the state of California. In the Lower East Direction, human services successfully secured millions in dedicated program funds helping those in need throughout the county. These programs often led to many awards, the National Association of Counties and the California State Association Counties. And we want to please join us in celebrating her retirement, although we sad to see you go, but you've done so many good things for our residents. Thank you for your years of dedication to San Bernardino County, and congratulations. It's here. And we're going to ask if you have family and friends who want to come up with you? Come on up. We're going to make you take a picture with us. What, do you want to get one first? Oh, sorry, sorry. Turn around. Jeff always says you can't place it at him because it's in a...
That's right. Otherwise, it's going to break. And hold the two, please. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay, come on up, and you can join in the picture, too. They did not plan that well, did they? The right way you want to take pictures, all the kind of...
They didn't ask.
One, two, three.
Stay up here. We get to hear your mom say a few encouraging words to the rest of us here.
I didn't know I had to do that. Just thank you. It's been an incredible, amazing 34 years. I've had 11 different jobs, and every one of them was incredible. I've had some great leaders and mentors, and I thank you all. I couldn't have done it or it wouldn't have meant as much without my wonderful family, and I'm so glad you're here today. I love you guys very much, and just thank you. I'm just looking forward to the next chapter in my life.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Next, we have Andrew Grucci, Deputy Director of Department of Behavioral Health. This is retiring after 30 years. Andrew, come on up. So Andrew's retiring after 30 years of dedicated service to the county of San Bernardino. He has a passion for serving our communities, providing essential leadership and management for the development of system of care to support newly housed individuals living with serious mental illness. Andrew is dedicated individual and a leader through his involvement in shaping community-based and mental health policies and practices at the local level, willing to help wherever is needed, and always supporting staff during challenging times. Again, today, we want to congratulate you, all our county family, congratulate you after 30 years of dedicated service to our residents. Thank you so much for everything you do, day in, day out. Congratulations on retirement. Want to invite your family up as well? I think it would be smart if we ever got non-reflective glass, non-glared glass, so the flash wouldn't come back and bounce off.
Jennifer, oldest son Nicholas, youngest son Ben, and two other kids who are unable to join us today. We're good. You guys good?
You get to say a few encouraging words, too.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank the board for the resolution. It really, truly is an honor. It means a lot to me. And also just want to thank a few people in particular. I see Ms. Cassania Thomas out in the audience, and who's the one who gave me the opportunity to be a deputy director. Then also like to thank my current and soon-to-be ex-boss, Dr. Veronica Kelly, for keeping me as a deputy director, and a number of other people, really too many people to thank in my career of the 30 years that were influential in it. And a colleague of mine, two years ago, or three now, in 2018, said, "Don't call me. I won't say that because I know it won't do any good, and I might answer." So, but thank you very much.
Well, we wish you all the best in retirement and good luck with your next chapter in life. Both you guys are way too young to start to do nothing, so I know you'll be busy doing something in your future lives. So thank you so much for dedicating so much time to our residents here in San Bernardino County. Congratulations again. Back to the agenda. Do we have any updates from the clerk on the board presenting the agenda, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one change for today's agenda. Item number 23. Recommendation number one is revised to read as follows. Ratify the Fiscal Year 2020 Community Power Resiliency Subrecipient Allocation Grant Subaward Amendment Number One to Agreement Number 20-987, signed by the Fire Chief on June 7, 2021, that extends the date of that, of the grant performance period by five months from October 31, 2021 to March 31, 2022. Those are all the changes I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody like to pull anything off the cassette agenda?
Chairman, this is Supervisor Baca. If you could just have a brief presentation on item 27.
Okay. Anybody else? I know Vice Chair Rao has a comment on what number?
Thirty.
Thirty. Okay. We're going to take everything besides two, I mean, 27 in a combined motion, items two through 64, not with 27. But I will let you make your comment after we get our public comments. And we're going to start off with a public comment. The first one is Tyler. Denather Tyler, because I have no last name, is Chad Alexander. Is there a Tyler outside? Going once, going twice. Okay, Chad Alexander. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. So I'm speaking on, I think it's consent number, or consent item number five. Why would Janice Rutherford want to hire Ken Hunt as her chief of staff? Hunt officially retired in 2019 or resigned to retire. It was later revealed that he had entered into a settlement with the city. Fontana, however, paid him for all of 2020 as well. So Ken Hunt resigned in 2019, never worked a day in 2020. However, Hunt took home $1.1 million, which is almost equivalent to three times his 2019 wages. Even more troubling than the large sum that was paid to Ken Hunt is the lack of transparency surrounding that. With this board's history of mismanaging tax dollars, why would Janice Rutherford want to bring Ken Hunt out of retirement to be her chief of staff, a man who played the political system and became rich off the backs of the people on this side of the partition, the taxpayers? Hunt was the highest-paid city manager in the entire state of 2020 despite having retired in 2019. Let's think about that. This man could sell a ketchup popsicle to a lady with white gloves. However, Janice Rutherford said Ken Hunt is the smartest and most ethical man. Now I have questions about Rutherford's ethics and ability to select good leaders and represent us taxpayers and manage the county. So Janice Rutherford, please think about that decision. We think it's a horrible one. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Garth Pasant, and then Neil Perkins.
Good morning. Is this the, on the agendas or on the public comment?
This is on cassette agenda.
Okay. This is cassette agenda number six, Aging and Adult Services. I am glad to be among such dignitaries, approved contracts with agencies to provide senior supportive services in a combined total contract amount not to exceed $1,813,000 for the total contract period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. This form that I am about to speak about is approved by the State of California Health and Human Services Agency and the California Department of Social Services. It is the in-home supportive services IHSS program recipient for designation of provider. Part of the agreement is the recipient must understand and agree that if he chooses to have this person provide services for him before he or she is enrolled as an IHSS provider, and the county sends me or he a notice telling that he is not eligible to be an IHSS provider, the recipient will have to pay him/her with the recipient's own money for the services that he/she provided before he/she was determined ineligible to be a provider and for any services he/she provides after the county notifies that he/she is ineligible. The timing seems wrong, and it is already evident that IHSS is the provider, yet they want the recipient to agree to this. Point number two, in the same form, neither the county nor the state will be held responsible for any claims and/or losses caused by the above-named person I choose to hire as my IHSS provider. I agree to hold harmless the state and county, their officers, agents, and employees, and to take responsibility for any and all claims and/or losses to any person caused by the named person I choose to hire as my IHSS provider. This provision is created by the above government entities, so the agreement sounds quite unreasonable and illegal. If, point number, next point in the agreement, if I do not get an approved exception, my provider will get a violation for working more than my maximum weekly hours. Again, how can the recipient agree to such things when the...
That's time.
...county makes it. If the aging adult refuses to agree to these requirements, he has refused IHSS...
Can we have Neil Perkins, and then Jane Hunt Rubel? Mr. Perkins? Yeah, Neil Perkins, sir.
Good morning. I'm just here to reaffirm the citizens' interest in having the Wabash repaved between Sixth and the end of the street. We have about 25 petitioners that are anxious to get this done. It's for the safety and convenience of having a road that's in good condition. That's about all I needed to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Ms. Jane Hunt Rubel, then Norma Gadeness.
Good morning, board members. Yeah, I wasn't going to speak out on this, but I noticed on the agenda 58 that I love our county fire, and I love county sheriff dearly, but this is going to cause a lot of, you know, it's only a 3% increase, but already, I'm a homeowner and I'm retired, and I'm still making mortgage payments, so every little bit kind of hurts. Could you, instead of a 3%, couldn't it at least be 1%? Because a lot of people I know in my community are retired, and we're just, you know, I have to stick to my really tight budget, and I love the county dearly, but there must be some other way that you can come up with, because it's really hurting people, especially that when you're still making house payments and they up my, from the tax assessments, they up it on my escrow account. So it's not that I don't like them, but there's got to be some other way, at least 1% increase or whatever, so most people can afford it, because they're doing a great job, but I just wish it was a little bit lower so people can actually afford it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Norma Gadeness, and then Tyler.
Good morning.
Good morning. The CDC has stated as of December 2021, it no longer uses the emergency use authorization PCR test. The PCR test is not FDA-approved, just like the three vaccines that are being administered in the U.S. It encourages laboratories to use the FDA-approved test that can detect and differentiate between COVID and influenza. So many of these COVID cases have been, so many of these COVID cases have been, oh, excuse me, so many of these COVID cases could have been influenza since the PCR test cannot differentiate between COVID and influenza. The inventor, Carey Mullis, of the PCR test, had stated the PCR test is not, is not testing for disease, it is testing for a specific pattern. When you increase the cycle threshold over 35 cycles, you get a better picture. It does not confirm disease. November of 2020, Dr. Fauci stated, admitted, any PCR, any PCR cycle threshold above 35 is dead nucleotide. On January 11, 2021, David Werth from San Bernardino County emailed the cycle threshold the county is using. Fulgen Genetics used less than 40, PerkinElmer 40 to 42, Quest 40, and LabCorp 38. Each laboratory is above 35 cycle threshold. Board of Supervisors, on the COVID Cal website in San Bernardino County, there have been over 300,000 positive cases as of July 25, 2021. The PCR test was never meant to diagnose and is used incorrectly, the cycle thresholds. This explains why there were so many false positives and why there are so few influenza cases. Will the San Bernardino County verify how many false positives there were, just like Alameda County did? Case stats also show there have been over 5,000 deaths in San Bernardino County. How many had underlying conditions? How many were strictly COVID? I'm not minimizing these deaths. Any death is sad. I will remind you about 700 deaths in 2020 from heart disease. The county was, the county was never put in a state of emergency because people died from heart disease. As of June 12, 2021, CDPH has stopped recording seral prevalence data, percentage of people with antibodies in California. California as a whole is at 85%, but they want 95%. Southwest, southeast region, Iñamoно, Orange Riverside in San Bernardino County are at 87%. We are already there. Remember, there is no mention about natural immunity. Natural immunity does exist, even though the state, local officials, and CDPH do not acknowledge it or collect data on it. It has been over a year now, and San Bernardino County has not removed the state of emergency. Why? Governor Newsom stated yesterday COVID needs to be extinguished. Really? Have doctors and scientists experienced the cold, viral, bacteria, pneumonia, influenza, and all the variants? In June, the San Bernardino County website stated it is fully open for business and tourism. Many have been to Disneyland, Costco, water parks, movie theaters, et cetera...
That's time.
...without restrictions. How can the county be fully open and still be in a state of...
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Tyler.
Thank you, everybody. I have a serious problem with Ms. Rutherford's choice for chief of staff, Mr. Hunt. Picking someone who was unable to perform his duties to such a degree that it warranted an immediate resignation at a distress to the city of Fontana. If he was unable to perform his duties in 2019, what makes him ready now? We don't know, because we don't know what that issue was. Being clouded in controversy, he now gets to fail up? I don't understand it, and we shouldn't accept it. Why would you pick someone who has zero trust with the public? It's disrespectful at best and callous at worst. I urge you to find somebody else capable of steering what Ms. Rutherford calls herself, I urge you to find somebody else capable of steering what Ms. Rutherford calls herself her sinking ship before Mr. Hunt continues his pillaging of government offers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That's all requests to speak I have in the Cassette agenda right now. And so I'm entertaining a motion for items 2 through 64 minus number 27.
Mr. Chair, I will move that although I'm planning on
Do you want to have a comment? Yes, you want to do your
No, well, I was going to say I plan on abstaining from number 40 because of a perceived conflict of interest potentially.
Okay, so you got a motion? Yes, second by Supervisor Cook. A roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cook? Supervisor Rutherford?
Hi.
Supervisor Rao?
Yes, with an abstention on 40.
Supervisor Hagman?
Aye.
Supervisor Baca?
Baca, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We're going to go to item number 27. I believe that's Terry, are you presenting that?
Do I get a comment?
Yes, please.
Oh.
I'm sorry. Before we go to 27, I
While Terry's getting situated, I just wanted to briefly comment and recognize that item number 30 authorizes the county museum to ceremonially recognize the land on which their facilities are situated as the historic territorial lands of the Surrano people, which includes the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians and the Morongo Band of Mission Indians. It has been my distinct pleasure getting to know the tribal history and to have them as partners and to be able to honor their ancestral history. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Terry, item number 27.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. Terry Rahal, Director of Land Use Services. Just a brief explanation of item 27. It's been placed on the agenda this morning to seek board direction to terminate a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, which was executed by the Code Enforcement Division of Land Use Services. This MOU was executed by staff in June of 2020 to grant a stay or actually a delay in code enforcement action on the site of an unpermitted truck parking facility in the community of Bloomington. This MOU conflicts with our current code enforcement priorities that have been set by the board for enhancements to the community of Bloomington, and therefore we're seeking your direction to terminate the agreement. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Joe? Supervisor Baca?
Yeah, Chairman, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Chairman, the reason why I just wanted this item, you know, brought to the attention, so this item was brought to our attention about, about a month and a half ago. It was an article also in the newspaper on this item in regards to an illegal truck business that was being run. Now, the concerns brought to, from the Bloomington community is, is one, that it was an illegal truck business, two, because of the proximity it was to Crestmore Elementary, which is part of the Colton Joint Unified School District located in Bloomington, so it was right next door. So Leonard gave me a little bit of history on this. This item was in the works, I guess, prior to me getting on the board. So I want to make it sure that it was brought to the attention publicly, that this was not done by the authority of the Board of Supervisors. It was a concern to me, it was a concern brought to our attention by Bloomington residents, and I just wanted to make sure it was brought out publicly, that it was not the direction of the county Board of Supervisors for this action and that this action is being asked today to be rescinding, I mean, full support of rescinding the action of the MOU.
Thank you. So I understand it's a motion. Thank you. We got a motion by Supervisor Baca. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Chair.
Need a second? Second by Supervisor Rutherford. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cook? Supervisor Rutherford?
Aye.
Supervisor Rao?
Yes.
Supervisor Hagman?
Aye.
Supervisor Baca?
Baca, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We're going to go to the public comment at this time. Shake things up a little bit. We got Joshua Tree, we're going to go there first. Patricia Domay? And then Jay Van?
My name is Patricia Domay. I'm 80 years old. I've been in Landers for about 20 years. Kathleen Johnson, who is a paleoclimatologist, said that we are in the worst drought in 1,200 years, and that's also been repeated by several other paleoclimatologists. Since I was here last, there were 23 pot farms around my house within a mile. There are now 30. They are popping up every day. Manuel Molina from Temecula has three plots, one of them right next to me. Everything they have is against the law. I retired at 75 after working 12 to 15-hour days to be able to afford my little cabin and five acres. And I was looking for peace and quiet. I don't have it anymore. There are five women that are on Coma Trail where I live. None of them are here. Why? Because they're scared to death. They are scared to death to even come and show their face. This is not right. This is not right for these women. It's not right for me. There was a big bust orchestrated by Kathleen Barger and Alex Villanueva, who is the head sheriff of LA County. This is what they had to say. What we want to do is send a clear and loud message to cartels and anyone doing an illegal operation in the high desert. Your days are over and we're coming for you, said Los Angeles Sheriff Alex Villanueva. I want to hear that kind of talk from our leaders here. This is ridiculous. This is absolutely ridiculous. My whole house, my little cabin smells like pot. I'm concerned a lot of the time. I just want to live in peace, but now I can't. And we need to get busy on this. We need to do something. If they can do it in Los Angeles, we can do it here, but we got to get off our duffs and get moving. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jay Van, then Michelle Baker.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Again, I think with all the, everything going on, I kind of got informed, I live in 29 Palms, and I feel almost the same thing. I think if you had these people living next door to you with these grow houses, that you would take a better concern. I've gone a little further and I've contacted the GEA from the government. I've worked for the government for almost 30 years under our vice president, Secretaries of Commerce, and I believe our Board of Supervisors need to be accountable to the people for their actions and what you're taking. I know Kathleen Barger very well. I served on, well, I can't really discuss some of the things, but I work in conjunction with her. An immediate action does need to be taken for these people, the safety of the children, our public. And I think everybody's job is at risk if you're going to allow this to go on because you're getting a very large group of people. Secret Service, because of the laundering of money. You have people that are being issued license and own restaurants around here and people that are providing funds and money, and you're only encouraging more and more people to come up here and to take over. There were two houses that are burned almost to the ground where the fire department's at risk, public services are being taken advantage of, and these people are not paying for it. They're making anywhere between $10,000 and $20,000 a week. It's quite a concern. They'll be sponsoring people to take over all the political positions to enhance what their objective is. That's all I have to say at this time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Then Michelle Baker, then Eric Sunstrom.
This is Michelle Baker. I live in 29 Palms and I live next door in a tract home neighborhood to where an illegal grow house was operating and it was raided by the Marijuana Task Force. And then that was about 12:30 PM on a Thursday. By midnight that night, it was fully engulfed in flames. That is next door to my house where my children live, where we've spent thousands of dollars, thousands of hours upgrading our house. And now I have a half burned down house next door to me and another one at the front of my neighborhood that are related. I have sent you guys comments through email, so you can look back to those. But my neighbors and I have put together a group. This cannot be tolerated. They know that they're getting a $500 misdemeanor fine. It was obviously brought to my attention when I had this issue next door to me. Thank goodness, my husband is a firefighter and knew exactly how to wet down our fence so that it did not spread to our house. Had he not have been a fireman, we not, I mean, I don't know that that would have, we would have had our house saved from all of this. My kids have been followed through the neighborhood by these people because they know who we are. They know that we busted them and they have followed us, they have driven through our neighborhood. They follow my son up and down every, there's about four streets in the neighborhood. They follow him on his bike, he's 15. I've had to install a security system, extra cameras, and floodlights. And like I said, like the previous speaker said, it's women. My husband's a fireman. I'm a single mom half the time. So I am a single woman, home alone, in a neighborhood where these people are targeting my family. A $500 fine is insufficient. It's unacceptable. I have been to my city council, I'm going there tonight. I have spoken with fire, police, anybody who will listen. I have emailed all of the representatives, senators, I have, I will email anyone who will listen, except nobody is responding to any of my emails, which is disappointing, disheartening. I grew up in California, I've moved away for a while and now I'm back and I'm disgusted by it. It makes me want to leave tomorrow. However, I can't because I probably can't even sell my house. In addition to all of it, the person my husband saw coming out of the grow house before it was raided and set on fire, they were carrying automatic weapons in a house that is next door to where my children live. So someone needs to get it together. I'm here, I've emailed everybody I can, I'm willing to be part of the solution. But they need to know that we see them and we know what they're doing and it's not going to be allowed anymore. And you guys are kind of the first chain of command, I guess, aside from the city, so I will keep going up as far as I have to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Eric Sunstrom and Jeff Taylor.
Hi, I'm Eric Sunstrom and good morning. I can't think of any more poignant comments than we just heard regarding the effects of the illegal cannabis, commercial illegal cannabis issue in the high desert. Now, the former speaker put it very clearly regarding public safety and crime and her fear to her family. Over the past few months, you've probably heard me speak quite a bit about how the water agencies out here in the desert have been undermining county law by actively providing water to the commercial illegal cannabis grows. Many of us have called out only because we've done the research on Big Horn Desert View Water Agency and the 29 Palms Water Agency. These weren't merely water services that were being provided because illegal cannabis farmers purchased a home, these were meters being put on empty parcels of land. It brings up a couple of things that are ugly to bring up, and one of them is the integrity of the water agencies and the integrity of, of public agencies in general. We have millions of dollars of black market cannabis out here and we had, for example, Big Horn that was blatantly going against their own state of policy that says there has to be permits for metered water on parcels of land. So it's just very hard for me and agencies that one who act like they're on the up and up to actually believe that they are. The other issue is there's been a lot of talk about innovative ways on how to handle enablers, people that provide services to the illegal cannabis growers. We can't, you can't even talk about that when you have your own water agencies that are giving metered water. It's impossible. Are we going to have a policy where we go out and actually cite or arrest the general managers of the water companies? No, of course not. But come on, we need to clean up our act out here. What I want is the county to provide some oversight to the water agencies. These are small agencies that run like mom and pop operations. They have to have oversight because they've clearly shown they're unable to do it themselves. And part of this, I want to call out Big Horn for at least trying, they appear to not be giving out meters anymore. Let's give them some kudos for that. But their policies need to be aligned with 29 Palms. They can't be operating by themselves and we need the county board supervisors and Supervisor Rao to take the bully pulpit and insist that the water agencies' policies are in line with county law and they're not undermining the county
That's time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Jeff Taylor, Amy Tesler.
Just thank you for having me today. Glad to see you're here, Supervisor Rao. Supervisor Rao, we have presently 1,059 illegal marijuana farms in San Bernardino County as of today. The majority are in your district, District 3. Matter of fact, it gets worse than that. District 3 of San Bernardino County is number one for illegal marijuana grows in the state of California. That's your district, Supervisor Rao. Your district has the most in California. And I asked you months ago, three simple questions, not just me, but other members of the community, and we got no response from you in these three months. Zero response. They were three simple questions. I'm going to ask them again now. How many new marijuana enforcement teams are there? That's question number one. Question number two, when will these teams begin raiding? When will they begin enforcement, the new teams, roughly? When will they begin raiding? Third question, how often, on average, will they enforce and raid? Those are the three questions I emailed you three months ago and you did not answer and other people in the community did, and they want answers. You ignored them. They want answers because most pot farms are in your district and people are living around them and they're rightfully anxious about all of this. So I asked you to answer those questions, okay? I know you know how to speak on the issue of illegal marijuana cultivation because you've spoken before. Let's go over some of your quotes on this topic of illegal marijuana cultivation, District 3. When we first reported illegal marijuana farms to you, and this is your quote, you said, quote, "Our deputies cannot be diverted from patrol responsibilities to focus solely on what is now a misdemeanor crime." Those were your words, okay? Diverted? Deputies cannot be diverted? Are we a diversion out here, Supervisor Rao? Or are we a community? We're not a diversion. They can't focus on a misdemeanor crime? A misdemeanor is a crime. So essentially, I'm going to paraphrase what you said. We can't have our deputies focusing on crime in a community that doesn't matter. That's a paraphrase, of course. Anyway, let's move on to your next quote that you said at a recent meeting regarding illegal marijuana cultivation. And I quote you again, "We know they're the bad guys, but they still have rights," end quote. Not exactly what your constituents wanted to hear from a leader when we're faced with this many marijuana farms. I'm going to let that speak for itself. The press is very, very interested in what's going on. As you know, NBC LA was out here, and they want to know, how did we get to this point? And all I can say is, I don't know what Supervisor Rao is thinking because she will not speak publicly about this, but I always say, look at the two quotes, I read them, the two quotes, and I show them the two quotes that you said. I said, that's all I could say. Those two quotes from Supervisor Rao, plus the numbers
That's time.
are your conclusion.
Thank you for your comments. Amy Tesler.
Hi, my name is Amy Tessier. I am here again today to discuss the illegal marijuana epidemic that continues to plague our rural desert communities because I want to ensure that solving this problem remains a top priority for this board. For months now, I have come with my family to speak to you about this issue because it's not going away. For over a year, I have written letters, sent emails, and attended community meetings because this epidemic is still because this epidemic is still terrorizing residents and absolutely destroying our environment. I understand that it takes time to train and organize the new marijuana enforcement teams that were created with the 2021 budget. However, the community is begging for a more outspoken and confident leadership approach to this issue. There is a sentiment among community members that the supervisors are intimidated by illegal growers, more concerned with the growers' rights than residents. This weak stance, whether true or not, does not sit well with people who have to face these illegal grows every day. These approximately 1,060 illegal grows are more than just a list of addresses on a spreadsheet or a red dot on a county map. These are criminal operations that operate 24 hours a day next door to families. They operate with zero regard for the neighborhoods they are in. Therefore, I am begging you Supervisor Rao and all the other supervisors to respond to your constituents' emails when they ask you questions and demand answers. We are not the bad guys. We are concerned mothers who want to keep our children safe. We want to know when we can stop wondering who is in every truck that drives by our house. We want to know when the fluorescent grow lights that run all night with blaring generators will be gone. We want to know when the crazed, barking pit bulls that pace in front of the fences will be removed. We want to know when we can stop worrying about the toxic chemicals that are leaching into our soil. We want to know when the excessive water usage will end. It's really so simple. We just want more answers from you all. We deserve more answers. You cannot rest on this issue until all 1,000-plus illegal marijuana grows are eradicated from this county. We need you to be strong, bold and proud of the enforcement plans you have. Share them publicly so that everyone, including the criminals, know that you are, that you are coming for them. Remember, when we fight, we win and we are not stopping this fight anytime soon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We're going to go back to the board chambers, Garf Posen, and then Jane Hunt Rubel.
I am glad to be here. This is regards the pro se litigant, one whom represents himself in a court of law. There have been pro se litigants for thousands of years up to today. Also, the state bar has influenced discouragement to pro se litigants all the way back to Jesus' Day in which at that time employed the Pharisees. Both the state bar and the Pharisees have somehow been appointed officers of the law. A great majority of these attorneys have failed and refused to adequately represent the public, whom have no choice but to become pro se litigants. When one attempting to be a pro se litigant enters the local law libraries to navigate his right to access to the courts, he is told by the librarian that he must seek consultation and representation of an attorney. This direction by the librarian betrays and represents collusion of a sort by the librarian and the state bar attorneys to trap the pro se litigant into somehow employing the attorneys or give up in pursuing petitions or responses against their adversaries in a court of law. Your help is greatly needed. Please note, please, the people deserve the right to choose representation or not. Adding to this, the court must get up off his fanny and preserve procedural rights to the people. The court must not fear the California State Bar, be made aware that the legal contents enclosed at the San Bernardino Law Library are much more complete than the internet. Immigration. A number of the rich of the Armenian and East Indian have entered our United States with greed and warful intent. They have brought into our country demonic monuments and have opened dangerous drug houses to destroy us. Just as Nimrod, they have closely populated and rebelled against God's decrees who spread across the earth. They have hogtied the medical industry along with the most treacherously happy Filipino and the African whom bring into our country myriads of their demonic voodoo gods and abusing our patients who seek help in San Bernardino County Department of Behavioral Health across the state of California and the US of A. They are also sending potential indignant clients away at an alarming rate. A number of store owners of these types have been murdered by American citizens. This dilemma must, may continue to rise. These foreigners must submit to United States ordinances or be deported. Hostile resistors must be executed, along with those in collusion with them who write up their legal contracts, the California State Bar.
Thank you for your comments, Jane Hunt Rubel, and then Shelley Sullivan.
Good morning again, board members. I'm here to talk about the usual, the community and public safety, but kind of with a twist. I have a question. Well, anyway, I was reading this, I don't know if it came from the county. It's called Healthy Communities and it was Strategic Growth Council. And it was from the characteristics of a healthy community, the Department of Public Health. And there again, I think this was when the countywide plan was having meetings. And it says here, "A healthy community is one that meets the basic needs of all residents, ensures quality and sustainability of the environment, provides adequate levels of economic and social development, and assures social relationships," that's part I find weird, "that are supportive and respectful. A healthy community strives for the following through all stages of life." And I found that community, about community strives, being supportive in your community and respectful, I don't find that happening in my community and probably some other communities. People in my community, not all of them, but a good majority of them, don't have any respects for the ordinances or laws out in our community. And it says right here, "Safe, sustainable, accessible and affordable transportation options." But the one that really got me was "Clean air, soil and water and environments free of excessive noise," which is not my neighborhood. So I just wish that, you know, I just heard that the sheriff department is going to, we're going to have more deputies, which is good, good thing. And I'd also like to find out, when are you guys going to bring this up about the home micro enterprise, home kitchen operations, which I'm totally against and it would be a disaster to our community because for reasons I stated before when I first got up here to speak about, our roads are already narrow and last weekend we had a really bad problem. A lot of parties going on and the roads are being narrow, you know, already because both sides of the street, I had to call the highway patrol on it because they're blocking our streets. And this will be a disaster. So I'm hoping that you'll not approve that, that project because it's going to be a real environmental and social problems out in my community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Shelley Sullivan and Philip Figgus.
Hi, it's sorry, that's Shelby. I'm a teacher and I have bad penmanship. I admit it. Sorry. I am a county resident. I am a mother of three and a teacher for 19 years. I am here today to ask that we allow mask choice in our schools. Numerous studies have shown that children are less likely to transmit COVID-19 and less likely to get COVID-19 than adults. Children do not typically spread COVID-19 even when not wearing a mask. Teachers like myself are no more likely to be hospitalized than any other profession. Adults have had sufficient time to get vaccinated if they so choose. Some have natural immunity and some have made their own healthcare decisions. It is not our children's obligation to make adults feel safer by wearing a dirty mask all day at school. Studies have shown that repeated exposure to mask wearing over long periods of time can be extremely harmful. Mask wearing can impact a child's language development, emotional development, interpersonal communication and overall physiological and psychological health. It's time to see our children's smiles again. Anyone that wants to wear a mask, I encourage you, but those that choose not to, let us go mask free. I advocate for the parental choice for masking and vaccinating their children. I request that students be given the opportunity to return to normalcy in the classroom, including optional face coverings and removal of discriminatory vaccination status practices. A few points shared from my first grade, a friend of mine that teaches first grade. It's crucial that students see their teachers faces and facial expressions. Kids learn to facial expression. They need that reassurance through our smiles. It's hard to communicate with masks on. My same friend mentioned that back in May when she was teaching in person, she was forced to get right up on a student's face in order to even hear them through the mask. How is that safer than being mask free across the classroom? Students' masks get filthy with slobber. If you've ever seen a five-year-old walk around, you know that they are just covered in dirt. And I always tell my kids, that's great. You're building your immunities. Go for it. But having that mask plastered on their face all day is not going to bring them health. Students need to see teachers' lips, especially in the lower grades. Teachers need to see students' lips as they help them develop their phonics skills, as well as our students that are learning English as a second language. It's not a teacher's job to enforce a mask mandate. They have way too many other responsibilities. Enforcing mandates and restrictions can do harm to our children. My oldest daughter, who is 15, was traumatized by her COVID protocols at her high school. She was chased by an officer down a hallway and almost tackled. Why? Going the wrong way in an empty hallway? We are traumatizing our children over these restrictions. And you hear, oh, but kids are so resilient. No, they're human beings and this will haunt them all the way into their adult years. How is breathing in their own carbon dioxide healthy? My same daughter that chose to return.
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Philip Figgus and Gigi Bear.
Why are the nations in an uproar and the peoples devising a vain thing? The kings of the earth take their stand and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against his anointed, saying, "Let us tear their fetters apart and cast away their cords from us." He who sits in the heavens laughs. The Lord scoffs at them. Then he will speak to them in his anger and terrify them in his fury, saying, "But as for me, I have installed my king upon Zion, my holy mountain. I will surely tell of the decree of the Lord. He said to me, 'You are my son. Today I have begotten you. Ask of me and I will surely give the nations as your inheritance and the very ends of the earth as your possessions. You shall break them with a rod of iron. You shall shatter them like earthenware. Now therefore, O kings, show discernment. Take warning, O judges of the earth. Worship the Lord with reverence and rejoice with trembling. Do homage to the Son that he may, may not become angry and you perish in the way, for his wrath may soon be kindled. How blessed are all who take refuge in him.'" We thank God that you initiate these meetings with prayer and the pledge of allegiance, but it has behooved many of us to ask why? When you don't even accept the input of the many individuals have done hours of research, reading and study into the aspects of human needs for survival, based on physiological observation and research. These people are those that you are supposed to be representing and they come from a wide variety of beliefs and philosophies about this physical life and the transendent life to come. It's hard to know and understand what you all believe about others, especially when you don't know somebody off the screen, backstage, so to speak. I'd like to ask, how many of you actually know the governor who wants to be president and who actually was planning on running for president? Or maybe you all haven't realized it yet, but you're not supposed to waste a crisis. He's the kind of guy that likes to be seen on TV with the stars and be with his kind at the finest restaurants in the USA. This whole event of what we call a plandemic or scandemic is evil and corrupt, but some have used it in order to establish a new world order, a one world totalitarian government, which is, by the way, is led by the Communist Chinese at this point. A reminder, 15 days to flatten the curve. It sounds like somebody at work borrowing a little change to buy something off the roach coach at break. I wonder if that still happens in reality or that possibly AB5 destroyed those who did such things. Repent and turn to Jesus.
Thank you for your comments, Gigi Bear, and then JB Marcus.
Good morning, board. I'm also here to talk about the choice and the mask mandate for our children. I recently went and visited my local district, District of Redlands, and spoke before then they looked bored, went to the Redlands City Council, who said it was up to the county. So I guess I'm just doing rounds right now. My concern is that this current mask mandate, according to the state, has been left up to individual districts and our individual districts are saying it's being left up to the county. It needs to be a choice for our children and it needs to be based on science and data only. This isn't a blue, this isn't blue, this isn't red. This is about freedom. This is about human choice. This is about our God-given rights. And so I'll pull some science for you guys. This is a recent study done by Stanford Medical. And in here it says, "Wearing face masks has demonstrated substantial adverse physiological and psychological effects, including hypercapnia, which was also reported in the JAMA study on June 30th. Shortness of breath, increased acidity, toxicity, activation of fear and stress response, rise in stress hormones, immune suppression, fatigue, headaches, decline in cognitive performance, predisposition for viral and infectious illness, chronic stress, anxiety, depression. Long-term consequences of wearing face masks can cause health deterioration, developing a progression of chronic disease and premature death." It needs to be a choice for our children. Like I said, the hypercapnia was supported by JAMA and there was also another study where a group of mothers in the state of Florida sent in all of their children's masks after a day of wearing them in school and it came back and tested positive for 11 dangerous pathogens. Everything from viruses like pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, viruses that cause, let me see what was here, food poisoning, Lyme disease, the list goes on. Sepsis, because they're children, they're not trained physicians. They don't change them on the hour when they go from class to class. They have no business wearing them. Also, another recent study by Johns Hopkins Medical where they did a, I think the CDC reported a total of 335 deaths across the United States, but failed to determine whether any of these children had underlying issues like cancer or leukemia. So Johns Hopkins did a study on 48,000 children under the age of 18, healthy children. The report, these children had all contacted COVID and the report came back after studying these children, zero mortality rate. Children under the age of 18 are not affected by this illness. To mandate a mask that will obstruct their airways and allow them to breathe healthy oxygen that will suppress their breathing system.
That's time.
Will not be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, JB Marcus, and then Wade Rittering.
Hello, I'm JB, retired firefighter and father of two, in the Redlands School District area. Thank you for hearing us today. When I attended my first school board meeting back on the, early May, I believe it was, at 25 West Sagony Avenue, I was not made to wear a mask. I was let right in. I didn't have to show proof of vax. And it was, it was fine. We got in there and we did it. We handled all our business. But when we went back on the 13th of July, just short two months later, now everybody has to wear a mask and you got to show proof of vaccination, which is a violation of our HIPAA rights. We were called unruly when the doors were closing our face and the moms were knocking on the door, hey, why can't we get inside and discuss this? We were called racist because we don't believe in CRT and teaching our kids to be racist. Can someone explain that to me? How does that make me racist? Because I don't want you to teach my kids to be racist. And like she was saying, this is 99.998% survivable, okay, for kids zero to 19 years old. Mathematicians and insurance actuaries call 0.002% arbitrarily close to zero, meaning it's so small that it's considered to be equal to zero, like she just said. So stop this crime against humanity, please, I'm begging of you, as you guys took the beautiful pictures up there with everybody that was retiring, all within six feet of each other, no masks. Thank you so much. God bless you guys. We got to stop this crime against our children.
Thank you for your comments, Wade Rittering and Justin Cadzo.
Good morning. Nullification is valid for anyone who takes an oath to support and defend the Constitution. Article 6, Clause 2 of the US Constitution says, "This Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof, shall be the supreme law of the land." This is the significance of America being a constitutional republic. Any perpetrated law, statute, code, regulation, rule or policy made consistently with the un- enumerated powers of the Constitution are presumed to be valid. In contrast, any perpetrated law, rule, or regulation which opposes and/or violates the Constitution in any way whatsoever is lawfully null and void. No bureaucrat, politician, or person acting in an official capacity has the illegal authority to restrict the constitutionally guaranteed rights of any law-abiding citizen. In Federalist 33, Hamilton noted that this clause expressly confines the supremacy to the laws made pursuant to the Constitution. The Americas Creed was written in 1917 by William Tyler Page and adopted by the House of Representatives in 1918. I believe in the United States of America as a government of the people, by the people, for the people, whose just powers are derived from the consent of the governed, a democracy in a republic, a sovereign nation of many sovereign states, a perfect union, one and inseparable, established upon those principles of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity for which American patriots sacrificed their lives and fortunes. I therefore believe it is my duty to my country to love it, to support its Constitution, to obey its laws, to respect its flag, and to defend it against all enemies. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Justin Cadzo, and then Emily Cadzo, the Cadzo family.
Thank you. I come to you tonight not as just a resident of the county, but as a teacher and a parent of two children in the county. The mask mandate being forced on our kids is not only wrong, but it's absurd and it's ridiculous. It'd be like you putting on a Band-Aid because someone else in this county is going to get a paper cut. It's that absurd. The only problem is, this is going to have long-term effects on our students and our kids, not just physically, because you've already heard that it can cause a lot of physical problems, but also mentally, emotionally, and academically. I'm sure none of you have actually been in a classroom more than a quick tour, walk-around, photo op, but I can tell you, from day in and day out, our kids need to see our face, they need to be able to hear us correctly, they need to work without these masks on. Now, California's higher-ups, in their cowardice ways, have said it's up to the districts to enforce mask mandates. They said, the rule is, they all have to wear the mask, but the districts have to enforce it. The districts now are saying, we're going to take our guidance from the county. God help us all. That's going to just keep circling around and around until someone has the backbone to say no more. There are a couple districts who've already said, we're not going to enforce it. It's a choice. My question to you, do you have the backbone to say it's a choice? If you feel comfortable wearing it, you can wear it, and if you feel like you don't need it, don't wear it. Do you have that backbone? Are you going to listen to the residents who've come up here and told you, we don't want this a mandate? Or are you going to listen to the opinions of people like Newsom, or the CDC, or the CDPH, who don't really know us, don't really care, and to be quite frank, don't, don't have our best interests in, in mind? Do you have that backbone? Or are you just going to let us talk for three minutes and then ignore everything we say? Unfortunately, members of this council, we don't trust anymore for just that reason. I'm urging you, for the sake of our students, for the sake of our kids, for the sake of our community, find that backbone, tell Newsom that we're not going to enforce masks, and then tell every single district, the masks are optional, not just for the students, but for the teachers.
Thank you for your comments, Emily Cadzo. And then we have Don Cadzo.
Hello, my name is Emily Cadzo, and I'll be starting 8th grade this August in the city of Upland. I'm against wearing masks in school for numerous reasons. At my school, it is eight hours a day wearing masks. These masks do more harm than good. For starters, they are uncomfortable and make you sweat. They also cause breakouts, which can be painful and cause scars. The masks can also hurt your ears. The masks we wear have been medically proven not to work against viruses. The only masks that have been proven to work are the N95s, which are medical-grade and have to be fitted. These masks make it hard to concentrate and hard to breathe. God gave us air and lungs, and these masks are making it hard for us to get the air. Kids have good immune systems, so if we do get COVID, we have a 99.997% chance we will heal and be okay. If you want to wear a mask, that is your choice. All of these mask mandates or COVID precautions should be optional. We should have a choice on whether we wear it or not. I refuse to wear a mask, get a jab, or undergo testing to go to school. We urge you to not mandate masks and give us freedom of choice.
Thank you for your comments. We're going to go to Don Cadzo, and then Brianna Cadzo.
Hello, my name is Don Cadzo. I was here a month ago urging the county board to give us parents the choice to unmask our kids in school this fall. I am here today for the same reason. School districts in our county are taking direction from this board. This is why it is important for you to not mandate the masks. In an article from MSN.com, it states that some small school districts in California won't enforce masks in classrooms. In the last San Bernardino County online update, it states that CDPH has issued new guidance for K-12 schools incorporating recommendations from the CDC to help local schools develop and implement plans for in-person instruction during the 2021-22 school year. Please remember that a recommendation is not a law, rule, or ordinance, but simply a suggestion. In this case, it is a suggestion that is not backed by any scientific evidence, but simply an opinion of those organizations. While the CDPH suggestion is to keep student masks, they do not have a mechanism for enforcing it and are leaving enforcement up to individual counties, districts, and schools. In essence, the districts and county are responsible for their suggestions. As of July 2020, kids K-8 cannot be suspended for disrupting school activities or willfully defying the valid authority of teachers and school personnel. Unmasking is not on the list, which means that K-8 students should not have to fear repercussions for choosing not to wear a mask. I am asking this board to boldly state that masks are a personal choice and that schools are not subject for mandating masks for students. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Brianna Cadzo, and then Kristi Spolstra-Burchett.
Hello, my name is Brianna Cadzo. I will be in 5th grade this year, and I want to go to school. I want to learn and see my friends, but I don't want to wear a mask. It breaks my face out, and it's uncomfortable. And it's hard to breathe, and I don't want to be forced into wearing one. I am healthy and not afraid of COVID. I would rather take my chances and live my life the best I can, and if I catch it, I will recover. I understand that some people are afraid and want to wear a mask. That is okay. They should have the choice, but I also want the choice. Please don't force the mask on me and my family and friends. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments, Kristi Spolstra-Burchett, and Norma Goodness.
Fully agree with all of the comments about mask choice in school, and definitely we've brought forward a resolution for the Board of Supervisors to consider. Hopefully, it's on the next agenda in August. We really would appreciate that, giving mask choice in schools. I'm here to talk about some of the vaccine rhetoric that's coming out. A new analysis finds several counties with above-average vaccination rates also have higher COVID case rates, while case rates are falling in counties with below-average vaccination rates. Statewide data analyzed by the Bay Area New Group found that five counties, LA, San Diego, Alameda, Contra Costa, San Francisco, have both a higher percentage of people who are fully vaccinated than the state average and a higher average daily case rate. Compare that to these five counties, Modoc, Glen, Leyton, Del Norte, and San Benito, which have below-average vaccination rates and decreasing case rates. In an interview back in April with actor and director Eugenio Derbez with Dr. Fauci, Dr. Fauci admitted that those who get COVID, the COVID vaccine, can still get and spread COVID after getting the vaccine. Yet, in Newsom's new mandate that came out yesterday, the vaccinated do not have to COVID test, but the unvaccinated do. So we continue to classify this as the pandemic of the unvaccinated. A news report by Alex Berensen says, at a White House press briefing on July 22nd, Surgeon General Murphy said that 99.5% of COVID deaths and 97% of hospitalizations are among the unvaccinated. Yet Scripps Hospital is admitting that they only test the unvaccinated. Their policy is not to test vaccinated people when they're admitted to the hospital. And this is why 99% of the hospitalizations are classified as unvaccinated. Are our hospitals doing the same? Highly likely that they are. Let's put aside the way public health authorities define vaccinated is not the way most people think of being vaccinated. If you've had a shot of either Pfizer or Moderna, you're not vaccinated. You've had two, you're still not vaccinated, not for two weeks. In countries where health authorities are more honest, statistics on hospitalizations and deaths have three categories: fully, partially, and unvaccinated. Many cases fall in the middle. So we are treating these vaccines, we're not treating them as we do in the, in the vaccinated category, because we're not designating them until after the treatment begins. After fully two weeks, they're considered vaccinated. So these are just things that I want the board to consider, since the U.S. is doing the opposite of these other countries, like England, Scotland, and Israel. And they have a higher percentage of their population is more vaccinated, and they've been more transparent about hospitalizations and deaths among the vaccinated. And their hospitalizations and deaths among the vaccinated have spiked since May.
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Norma Goodness, and then Joni Colgill.
On the weekend of July 10th, 2021, Supervisor Desmond of San Diego met with many from his district. Families from his district want masks to be optional once the fall school year starts. At the Board of Supervisors meeting on July 13th, Supervisor Desmond stated children are not severely affected by this virus, but are the last ones to lose a mask. Second, parents and adults should protect children. Children should not be used to protect adults. Third, the kids, kids are learning to read, write, and speak. Facial expressions are vital for children to learn. How is this going to happen when everyone is wearing a mask? Also, there is a level of anxiety wearing a mask. We should prioritize the well-being of our kids. Let them go to school without masks. He asked the CAO to draft a letter to Governor Newsom on behalf of the board to let the parents decide whether or not children should wear a mask. His motion failed 3 to 2. Supervisor Rutherford, two of my children graduated from Altaloma. Hi, and my youngest, Sophia, will be a junior this year. She takes pride in being a brave, go Braves. She's a good student and made the varsity soccer team as a freshman and as a sophomore. They made it to the state finals this year. She would love to play high school soccer again and misses her friends and teachers. Board of Supervisors, will you take a stand for the children of San Bernardino County? Urge Governor Newsom to make masks optional for this coming year. I've been to three board meeting, school board meetings in Rancho Cucamonga. One of the board, one of the school board meetings, we were not allowed in because we would not wear a mask. And, you know, that's just terrible. Look at this room here. Everybody here, most of us don't have a mask. Why should kids wear a mask when they're the least susceptible to this virus? You know, many in the Altaloma School District have said, if these mask mandates do not get removed, there will be an exodus of kids out of that school district. This is Stork, Jasper, many of those schools in the Altaloma area. It's not fair for us to have, to pay property taxes to renovate these schools when other people, when other kids are going to come in as transfers and use these schools. It's just, we're asking you to urge the governor, urge Public Health Department to go ahead and remove these mask mandates. The Public Health Office is right across the street here. There, there is no reason for kids to be wearing masks six to eight hours a day in school for five days a week. We're urging you to go ahead and please put a letter in to Governor Newsom and the Public Health Department and remove this for our children, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Joni Colgill, and then Jared Gustafson.
Good morning. I had more prepared than I wanted to say, but in listening to people from Joshua Tree, listening to retired people living on a fixed income, listening to parents and grandparents begging for their children's right to breathe, I just couldn't help but really try to impact. You are our representatives. We do not, we are not a people that want to cause insurrections in any disrespectful way. We want to be law-abiding. We want to trust you again. We don't understand why we, we get no answers to emails, we get no real response. What would it hurt you? How would it hurt you to stand up, to stand up for our children? Just start there. We'd give up everything, we always do, for our kids, and we need to see that same commitment coming from you all. You know, you, you Board of Supervisors, we have no way around you at present, but if we do not see a real effort to reach out and answer, why do we have pot farms in San Bernardino County? Why? You tell us that they're, they're, they're not, they're breaking the law, so where's law enforcement? Then you tell us you can't take the masks off our kids because that's breaking a law. Do you see any problem with these two things? You should be supporting our children and going after lawbreakers. Wouldn't that make a lot more sense? It does to we, the people that put you all there to act in our best interests. We don't know how to do it on our own without it breaking the law. We do not want to go there. We want to go with you. We will back you 100% if you stand up for our children. Stand up for law-abiding citizens. Don't raise taxes on people with, with low income. Do something to help your people. We are begging you. That is all I have to say right now.
Thank you for your comments, Jared Gustafson, and then Ron Sellers.
Yeah, thank you for hearing me, San Bernardino Board of Supervisors. My name is Jared Gustafson. I come before you today as the elected leader of the Inland Empire Liberty Coalition. All throughout this county, there's groups that are rising up, that are organizing, that are fighting for, to protect our civil liberties and celebrate and endorse American freedom. I'm also here as an emergency medical technician of 15 years. In the last five years, I've spent in a local emergency room. I've taken this last year very personally. It's felt personal, I think, for a lot of us. I think this contributes to the polarity and the division that we are experiencing, but no one takes this more personally than I do. I've been in the ER. I've come face-to-face with this virus. Unfortunately, I've put bodies into bags. There's no more sensitive, yet sacred moment than when you have to do that. My own aunt has died from COVID, and not many have come face-to-face with this virus in the same capacity I have, but I think we all feel its effects. And while many adults have struggled with this virus, I can say that our youth have severely struggled from the psychological effects of isolation and mandatory masks. After losing several friends to suicide, I'm here to speak out. After watching young girls and boys in our community commit suicide, I'm here to speak out. Children are the least likely to contract this virus. They're the least likely to transmit it, and they're the least likely to be severely affected, and yet they are the most regulated and controlled. And while we're out enjoying restaurants and drinking cocktails with our friends again, there's mandatory mask policies that are muzzling children while they're trying to seek educational attainment. So I'll say this briefly, as an, as a medical professional, masks do work. They do work when used effectively. They do work when used effectively. But 99% of the time, we are wearing them inappropriately. And we wear them this way. We touch them, we wear them too long, we put them in our pockets, we put them in our bags, we throw them in our cars. It leads to an increased risk of infection. And the chief offenders of this are children. So please, I'm here to advocate against mandatory mask use. And when I was trying to do that at the Redlands School Board, we were locked outside for multiple hours in the hot sun. The police were called on us. We were treated like a mob when really it was a concerned group of mothers. And so I'd like to ask you, amidst these politically polarized times, please continue to protect our civil liberties. And if you hear nothing else, hear this, please. At least consider issuing a statement like Roseville that said, "District staff will not be placed in the compromising position of taking enforcement actions. District staff will instead redirect all resources to every student to get the best education possible." Thank you for considering this. My name is Jared. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your comments. We're going to move on to Ron Sellers, and then Kristy Spence? Sorry, I can't read it. But Ron, Mr. Sellers.
Thank you. I agree with everybody, what they have been saying about masks and other things like this. But I would like to know, how many of you here, how many politicians do you know, how many government officials do you know who are making extra money on the side from all the activities going on? I know of a governor of a nearby state who has marijuana farms. Why in the world would a governor of any state have that? I can tell you more, but I won't miss point. The corruption that goes on in the United States of America, this is overwhelming. Do we really care about the U.S. Constitution? I am glad we do have that presented each meeting in the beginning. Also, who do you represent? The unions? We know the unions are so corrupt and so useless and needless. Why can't we have schools without unions? We don't need unions to have schools. That used not be the case. I'm old enough to know that personally. We did not have unions to run our schools and to also teach doctrine, which is even, the historical information is totally been warped and polluted in the schools. The mask has nothing to do with help prevent this disease. It is strictly for control, control, control. The New World Order is definitely a real serious problems going on. People are trying to mess this up. In the school districts, of course, we have common core, common rotten to the core. It never was right, and it was good in the first place. And the idea is not only ridiculous, but it's evil. Because they're trying to push kids into learning things which are not even, not only true, but not even usable. You don't learn math by common core. The represent of the people is paramount in your offices. I remember having communication with Jerry Pettis when he was in the office, and he communicated. I even have a couple letters from him. I saved them because they were good, they were concerned. Communications from the representatives right here in our own Supervisors District, who are you representing? The unions? Who are you representing? The people who work? The officials?
That's time.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you for your comments. Kristy Spence?
Hello, good afternoon. I'm actually speaking out against the mask mandate. I know I'm probably reiterating a lot of what everybody's already said. My name is Kristy. I'm a registered nurse. I work in the emergency department, and I, like Jared, have seen this since the beginning, and we've kind of lived it in the heart of it. Like anybody has said, children are the least susceptible to this virus and the most regulated. And it's kind of ridiculous how much we are putting on our kids when they're trying to go to school and trying to learn. We all know that the only mask that works against a virus such as this, this is airborne virus, is an N95. We're not giving this to our kids. We're giving them cloth masks and masks that do not even protect them or anybody else against this virus. So that alone is against the science. I'm a nurse. I'm all about the science. I can pretty much speak for everybody in this room that nobody trusts the science at this point. Nothing really lines up. So I think that that, along with the fact that these kids are touching their face all day long. I work where I have to wear a mask for 12 and a half hours, and I touch my face all day long. I'm constantly pulling it down, putting it back up. I'm irritated by it. I can't imagine trying to be in a class and learn with a mask on my face. I think I would lose my mind, not to mention the fact that I had a hard time paying attention in class alone when I was a kid, and then having to have all these other things put on us is just ridiculous. The fact that this virus is spread in such low numbers with kids, and the fact that the flu is one of the highest spread numbers, and we have had a flu season for the last 10 years, and we've never mandated masks on kids in classes, and they have passed the flu around to each other for decades, and they've just, we've just gone past it, and we've never put masks on our kids, and we're doing it for this virus that is barely being spread through there. And when they do, they live through it. I haven't seen any kids coming in that sick, but I've literally held kids' hands as they died from the flu. Never had this issue before. Also, I'd like to talk about the fact that I have never seen the amount of kids that are coming into my ER with psychiatric evaluations and suicidal ideation. I mean, these kids are less than 15 years old, and they're talking about suicide. The entire, you know, foundation of their lives have been stripped down for the last year, and they just want to go back to normal. Everything's, you know, not coming back to normal. The last thing they have is school, and they just want school to be normal. And I think that we need to give that to them. I also think that parents should be in charge of their kids' medical decisions. These are the parents' choice. If parents want their kids to be masked, then that's their choice. But I think that it should be up to the parent whether or not their kids should be masked. And if teachers are that afraid, don't teach. I mean, there's so many other things you'd be catching from these kids other than COVID. Let's be real. Like, they're passing pretty crazy stuff around each other for years now, and COVID's the least of their worries. If you think the vaccine works, then get vaccinated. If it doesn't, then wear a mask. But that should be the teacher's job, not the kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That's all the requests I have to speak this time. I'm going to do something unusual, since we haven't had a COVID update for a while. We normally can't respond to public discussion, but then bring Andrew up to kind of give out a little bit of what's going on and kind of keep it short. But Andrew's in charge of our public health. And there's a lot of people saying fingers are pointing. There's a state mandate for students to wear masks, but they give the option for the school districts to enforce it. Then the school district boards are pointing it back to the county, and I can see how everyone gets very frustrated with all this. So I wanted to kind of make that clear. And Andrew, what is the situation here?
Sure. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Andrew Gofrak, interim director for Public Health. So the way that the CDC and CDPH had outlined the guidance and the recommendations is that there are 15 different levels of guidance for masking and other precautions relating to safe back-to-school. The CDC, and I'm going to read the language directly, is that schools will have a mixed population of both people who are fully vaccinated and people who are not fully vaccinated. These variations require K-12 administrators to make decisions about the use of COVID-19 precaution strategies in their schools to protect people who are not fully vaccinated. The enforcement is up to the schools. However, masking is one of those that is still under the state health order for K-12 indoor setting where students are present. Sorry, go ahead.
So I just want to just restate in English. So the CDC has recommendations. The state public health order still says students have to wear masks.
Correct.
And a lot of people come and talk to me, it's like, why don't you just make your own rules? The county cannot make a less restrictive rule. We can make rules more restrictive, but not less restrictive. All we have a chance to do is what level enforcement that we do on a more restrictive rule or law. Kind of figure yourself as law enforcement. If you wear your seatbelt, that's a state law. Why isn't that law enforcement policy that writes you a ticket for not wearing a seatbelt? That's up to that law enforcement person. You're still violating a code if you're not wearing that seatbelt. That's kind of what we've been put in position as the board and in public health for the last 18 months. How much enforcement of the state public health order are we going to do? Andrew, how many citations and fines has public health given out the last 18 months?
Zero.
So zero. So we're probably on the low end of enforcement. So I should go talk to school boards, and I will be sympathetic. I have a 13-year-old going back to school as well. I actually got her vaccinated, but I don't want her to wear a mask either. Now, we have only so much we can do on a local level. Like I said, I cannot make, we cannot, as a board, make rules less restricted than what the state public health is. All we have the opportunity is what to enforce and what levels of enforcement. And the school districts, I've heard this many times, are pointing the finger at public health because what they have to do is they have to take the state public health order and regurgitate it. And we can make it more restrictive, but we have never made it more restrictive. We've done painstakingly to make it as least restricted to the state as possible. And the only thing we have to do on the county level is what level enforcement. I guess that's about it. Do you have anything else to add? Anything else coming down the pike on this, since I got you up here?
As far as school guidance, nothing additional other than what's already out there. But we will say that the transmission rate is drastically increasing since June 15. Today's numbers, case rates per 100,000 is 10.7, which if we were to have, still had the blueprint for economy, we'd be in the purple tier.
Thank you. So things are going back up since we've been open, which is expected, especially after Fourth of July gatherings and things like that as well. I also will say for those who say, why don't you take more proactive? We have taken the governor to court, up to the California Supreme Court, and we lost. We have challenged many of those orders at the beginning of this, and many other entities have as well. We have made resolutions in the past as well. It still hasn't changed the fact that we have to regurgitate the state public health order, and we have the sole level to enforce or not enforce those state rules. And we've done a educate-only approach to even during the highest levels of the pandemic through the county, when we knew businesses were not following the rules. And we have sent them letters, but we've never fined anybody. We never physically went out and shut anybody down. We never sent law enforcement out anywhere. And we continue to try to be very open with our residents as far as education, encourage them to take their level of comfort of safety measures they do for themselves and their family. And that's what we'll continue to do here on the county level. Yeah, please.
Can you clarify for me? I thought that the schools had the responsibility of whether they chose to enforce or not enforce.
That is, well, that is correct. So they own the enforcement aspect.
Okay. Because I'm, Kristy, I'm with you 100%. All of our speakers today, I wouldn't want my kids wearing masks in school, and it's my choice as a parent. So that's a school board decision, whether they enforce or not at the various schools. Is that correct within the districts?
That's correct.
And the county doesn't have a rule?
No, we act more in an advisement aspect, but it is up to the school districts to create their enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could, Chairman, the county does not have a health order in play that requires masking. So that's not something that's coming from the county side.
And unfortunately, as the parents run around and try to find out who to advocate to, they're being pointed in all different directions. And it's very frustrating. And we will continue to work. We do meet, I have met personally with some groups on the outside to see what we could do to advocate more and to educate more on this issue. The state's kind of, well, let's call it what it is. They try to divert. You know, the state is running the health order right now. The governor and his health advisors made the state cover order, but instead of taking responsibly, they now pointed down to the school districts and said, you guys have to enforce. Or not enforce, it's up to you. But in reality, they get funded and mandated by the state to follow these rules. So it's really a bad situation for the local school board members, too, where they said, well, it's up to you to enforce, but by the way, we're the one grading you, guiding you. The county doesn't. It's the state. State funds our schools directly. They set the rules for the schools. And then the school board members don't know what to do besides point to the county public health order because that's what they see on the each by county, county. All we're doing, and that's not true for every county. LA County is much more restrictive. You see that on the news where they say you gotta wear masks indoors. You can make it more restrictive, you just can't make it less restrictive. And we did, this entire time has made it as least restrictive to the state rules as possible, and then we have our choice of level enforcement. So thank you, Andrew. I just want to bring that up, and I understand everyone's frustration, though. I really do. Colonel?
Yeah. You know, it's hard to keep track of everything that's going on and how this is mutating and the new strain. I kind of thought, well, there might be, everybody's going to moan when they hear this, there might be the fact that we have to have maybe a booster to help with the spread or this outbreak. Have you seen anything in the literature or it's like, here we go again, but the way they're talking about it right now, it's going to have an impact on everybody again, whether you like it or not. And I don't know how it's going to be mandated, but that's... Any comments on that? You know what I'm talking about.
Absolutely. There have definitely been discussions at the federal level around a booster shot. Right now, there is more specific discussions, and it's not yet been approved by the FDA specifically around those that have had the vaccine for greater than six months that are also autoimmune compromised.
Yeah.
That has not yet been approved, but that is a very real discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Leonard, would you mind coming up and giving our residents an update on what is to come with regard to our illegal cannabis initiative?
The sessions of today.
Yeah. And I know we have information coming August 10. Can you give us a little preview into that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Chair, and members of the board. So the team has been, since the approval of the budget, the action that the board took for the Community Concerns Bucket, our code enforcement, our sheriff's department, and county council, as well as the administrative office, have been working together to come forward and are with a whole approach and recommendation on how to proceed in this area. We plan to do that next board meeting, and it'll be a multi-department presentation to go over the different considerations for the board's ultimate approval and activation on that. There's a lot of prep work and groundwork we've been doing. We've been talking with other counties that have had efforts in this area successfully. And I want to thank all the departments for their work, county council for their work. And so we look forward to bringing that back.
Thank you. I know we heard, we had some questions asked today. I talk about it frequently. They seem like, I know the answers. I think a lot of our residents do, but because we still have folks asking, if we can make sure that all those questions get answered in that presentation, that'd be great.
Will do.
Okay, we're going to continue on with board comments, because we have those discussion items. Anything else? Colonel?
You know, I think a lot of people are frustrated with the situation with the marijuana and everything else and how you do this. Obviously, one of the big legislative agendas, I think, for some of us is, you know, to make this misdemeanor is ridiculous. We've opened up a can of worms. It's got to be corrected. And the other thing, I'm, it's just curious whether we should ask for federal help in terms of satellite location of these things. It's very expensive when you do that, but if you had satellites that could locate specifically those targets, they can find a target in Afghanistan and everywhere, you know, that's... Why not expand the horizon? Because this is affecting our livelihood. It's everyone here. And all they can do is say no, I guess. It's very expensive, but still, it's affecting our community. I don't know whether we should go down that path. Anything that we can get like that. They spend money, trust me, they spend money on a lot of weird things in Washington, D.C. And this is something that is a real, real serious problem in San Bernardino County. So can we go forward on that or at least have a discussion on that?
Are you proposing that we have sort of, we know where the grows are? So unless you're proposing annihilating them from space, which I would fully support.
No mind reading. I'm sorry, I'm out of that business. That was 26 years.
We know where they are. It is a...
I understand that, but I think that when... I, I, I understand that, but I, I think that we're dealing, and I don't want to get in a big, long discussion, but they're not stupid out there. These people, that's a multimillion-dollar industry. They move around. I think, uh, what's active, I, I don't know if we're in sync with the, the science on locating them. And, uh, so I don't know. I just threw that out there, at least study it and propose it. The people have been very, very active in their comments, and I, and I appreciate it. And, uh, any weapon we, uh, we have, uh, to help on that. The first one, I think, is you gotta change the law from that being a misdemeanor. Because, uh, you know, we're almost subsidizing this legally, what they're, um, what they're doing out there.
Thank you. Well, I'll conclude by saying, thank you all for coming. Sometimes we take a while to get, we can't respond to everything, especially in the public discussions that we have the agenda item. Know that, um, the two main topics today have been on the forefront of our minds for a long time. We have, the board has taken numerous steps to beef up enforcement in high deserts. People say, why in our county? We got a lot of open space. We're the largest county in the United States geographically, a lot of open land, and it's cheap to put these things down very quickly. And so we have responded with just a, a major budget increase and a combined task force from multiple different agencies, multiple different departments. And, um, we'll receive a report, I believe, next, next agenda item? On the next agenda, a full report on that, that we have been working, we have been, given the resources to the professionals needing to do this, and we do take it very seriously. Same to the masking, um, and, and pretty much the whole COVID thing. We definitely, um, not only hear it here, but we hear it on our day-to-day lives when we go out and talk to our neighbors and friends and family. We have these discussions. And just know that, um, we feel the same frustrations you do. We're trying to do everything we can to make sense out of all the stuff that's out there all the time. And, uh, and at the same time, we have to be conscious that the coronavirus has not gone away, even though we are open, we proudly say we're open for business. And the state has no longer given us restrictions in certain regards for our businesses, which we're very thankful for, but we're very frustrated with that as well. And because of that, um, expectably so, the, the case rates on, on the rise. And we're doing everything we can as your governor to be competent, be prepared, and for those who do succumb by the, the coronavirus. So you gotta please take whatever precautions you feel comfortable on your family to do. And, um, with that, we'll adjourn until the next, um, board meeting, which is on the 10th? Is that correct? Uh, yeah, August 10th. Thank you very much.